Good evening. We're going to go ahead and call the City Commission meeting to order. I would ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Al, roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
All right, number two under routine business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 14th, 2022. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the minutes? Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right. Number three under routine business is the City Manager's report, so I will turn it over to City Manager Leo.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission and public. Few things to visit with you about this evening. Looks like inclement weather. Ice and snow is probably on the way, so Adam and his crews will be monitoring conditions and will let you know accordingly how if it's going to be a chemical attack or if we have to go for something worse. But if plows are ready, we'll be in contact with Dr. Kendall and Dr. Long, as well as the private schools, so they can make their decisions early tomorrow morning. Coming up on Thursday, as folks know, we have the Holiday Parade of Lights, as well as the tree lighting. So we encourage everyone to check out Facebook and make sure they come on down to start the holiday season. I'm aware that maybe we're on good terms with the Grinch, and so if he should make an appearance, perhaps he will be, his heart will have grown two sizes since last Christmas. Christmas party for the city will be on Friday. That's at the Meridian Venue, I believe it's called, former Hatch Building. We have notified the press of a potential quorum, no city business other than celebrating the holidays together. Our second meeting, just as a reminder to everybody, will be here in this meeting room on 12/22, which is a Thursday. That will be at noon, so Jean will be contacting you all to make sure we have five of you to attend. So that's not very long, that's not very far from today. So we have one real business meeting after this evening to wrap some things up, and then we'll have that final meeting if there's any loose ends. Wanted to encourage folks to take a look at the information that was sent out in their last utility bill on recycling. That calendar has changed, and so we've gotten a few questions about that. So in 2023, we will still be doing every other week, but the weeks have changed. So we'll have some double pickup on north routes, I believe, the last week in December. The first week in December, that's what I was about to say, first week in January, we'll be collecting recycling, and we'll also be recollecting that recycling that last week of December. Yes. So we're going to update Facebook and kind of push that out as well. So there'll be a little bit of confusion. We know during this time of year, a lot of recycling occurs. But then we'll be back on our regular schedule, so just asking people to stay apprised of that change. Also, on tonight's agenda, item number 12, we want to get moving on that. That's a MEED Property Development Bid Award. I passed out an email that was sent to me by Adam Haberman in working through our bids, bid documents with our engineer. The bid, low bid, is still correct in terms of the individual, but it is $36.40 higher. So if the Commission is inclined to award that bid, the amount that we would request that your motion is is in that email there and not what's in the public packet. So it's $36.40 higher there, so want to bring that forward. Also, just to clear something else up, there's an item on your agenda regarding a agreement with BY Water for service in that MEED area development. It was reported that it was serviced in the MEED building. That's not correct. It's the MEED area development, as you know. But because that was reported on the media, I just wanted to clear that up for you tonight, so the public was aware what that was about. Also, to give you and the public a little update on West Side Park. We did have a meeting with Stockwell Engineers last week regarding what's going on in West Side Park, and Stockwell has provided us with a redesign of that area. And so they're going to get to work with our contractor on abating that design issue so that we no longer have leaking in the pond going forward. Now, some of that depends upon conditions, and starting tomorrow, the weather looks like it could be tough to do some work. So whether or not the contractor is able to do that work this winter or not depends upon Mother Nature. But the water will have to be pumped back down in order to do that fix. But we're committed to get the project that the public and you expected, and so we're working together as a team to do that. And if folks have more questions, certainly happy to answer those in more detail. There is an area on the north end of the pond as well that had a failed permeability test, and that's something that the contractor needs to work on with the engineer. But we are working as a team to make sure that we can get that remedied and again, provide the project that people are expecting. I have contacted Avera, so they are aware that what's happening and the bridge will not need to be removed in order for them to make that fix. So I'm happy to answer questions if you have them. We have folks from Stockwell here too, since they have other agenda items pertaining to them if you would like to ask them any questions. Otherwise, I'm happy to talk about anything here that I've mentioned or any questions that the Commission has, Mayor.
Are there any questions for the City Manager? Everybody's just excited to move on to our agenda tonight. All right, so we will go ahead and do that. Before we get to our regular agenda, now is the time and the place for anybody in the public that wants to appear in front of the City Commission tonight for something not on the agenda. Seeing no movement, we will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Number one is consideration of memorandum 22-232 recommending approval of the renewal of the applications for the private collector of refuse licenses for the year 2023, which is January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023 licensing period. Number two is consideration of memorandum 22-230 recommending approval of the renewal of applications for the 2023 dance licenses. Number three is to establish December 12th, 2022 is the date for a public hearing on the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for one day, January 21st, 2023, from Riverside Roadhouse, Inc., doing business as Riverside Roadhouse. That is located at 44368 309th Street, Mission Hill, at the Meridian Venue, located at 101 East 3rd Street. And number four is consideration of memorandum 22-237 regarding the mayor's appointments to the Summit Activities Center Task Force. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any discussion?
I do, I guess, have a question about number four, if it's necessary to take it off the consent agenda or not. But I just have a question about the naming, I suppose, and I suppose the objective.
Then we should take it off consent and put it under new business.
All right, let me make that motion change. All right, so the consent agenda includes items one, two, and three only. Number four will be moved to new business. What is your pleasure? We already have a motion and a second. Do we need to amend it? Or are we okay?
If you're worried about it, ask for a motion to amend.
I'm not worried about it, I guess. I'm just checking. It's a consent agenda. I don't know if it has to be real formalized, but I'm just asking. All right, we're going to go ahead and make the motion to move one, two, and three forward on the consent agenda item. Having no other further discussion, all those in favor of moving the consent agenda, say aye. Oppose, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right. Moving on to old business, number one is consideration of memorandum 22-228 regarding the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for one day, December 10th, 2022, from the VFW located at 209 Cedar Street, at the Meridian Venue located at 101 East 3rd Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a double motion and a double second. Is there any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under old business is consideration of memorandum 22-229 regarding the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for one day, December 2nd, 2022, from Stripes, Inc., doing business as Mojo's, located Mojo's 3rd Street, located at 101 East 3rd Street, for an event at the Meridian Venue located at 101 East 3rd Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, cruising right along, moving on to new business. Number one is memorandum supporting the first reading of memorandum 22-227, supporting ordinance 1013, the second supplement to the 2022 annual appropriation, ordinance 1067, and setting December 12th, 2022, as a second reading and public hearing of said ordinance. Can I get an introduction?
Introduced.
Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-224 recommending that the city write off the uncollectible utility accounts. This is in the amount of $1,884.04 for four residential and one business property. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries.
Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-225 regarding a water system limited joint development agreement between the City of Yankton and BY Water District for the provision of water services to the MEED addition and adjacent Yankton Youth Soccer Association project. And before I ask for a motion from the Commission, is there anything, I don't know, Dave, Amy, anybody wants to update on? I understand this is new language coming before us because of it being a business? Is there anything?
I don't think so, Mayor. Just so the public's aware, we do have arrangements with BY Water to serve residential districts that are outside of our water service territory and that are in BY Water service territory. We have a number of those occurring. This expands that partnership or relationship to include the commercial area. So as we move forward with developing that property, we can provide service for them until such time that BY Water can and wants to be able to provide the service. So work much the same way as our, as our commercial agreements do. As work much the same way as our residential agreements do. Thank you, Ross.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. I didn't know if anything we'd hear tonight would affect the motion. So without further clarification, what is the pleasure of the Commission?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries.
Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-207 and resolution 22-58 regarding a library contract between the City of Yankton and Yankton County. And I understand City Manager Leon is representing, doing double duty tonight, representing the library. So if you want to walk us through this and share what you'd like to share.
Yes, Dana Schmidt, our library director, apologizes she couldn't make it tonight. So she asked me if I would cover the agreement between Yankton County and the city. Nothing has changed in regards to the county agreement from last year. This agreement sets forth that a non-resident library card outside the City of Yankton, outside Yankton County is $40 per household per year. And under this agreement, Yankton County household pays $20 per year for a library card. And Yankton County provides $15,000 per year to supplement the remaining costs. The current fee of $20 per household was effective on January 1, 2020. Same fee being suggested here this year. So Dana has already visited with the Yankton County Commissioners, and they have approved to move forward with this agreement. Presently, Yankton County has, Yankton Library has 777 cardholders that reside outside of city limits and within Yankton County. So each member of the household can have their own card if they choose with only one payment per household. I did distribute to you, Commissioners, Dana asked if I would the annual report for the library, because some good information in there. Just for more information on usage, there are 4,726 total library patrons. So the 777 county patrons represent 16%, a little more than 16% of our patrons. The items checked out is also just over that 16% mark. So they're reading or checking things out, same levels, are in-town patrons. The total budget of the Yankton County, Yankton Community Library is $861,399, and the county is contributing $15,000 to that, so that's about 1.7%, just under 2% of that budget. So just a few little more facts that support why we ask Yankton County to help us out financially with the operations of the community library. So also, just to remind folks that maybe don't use libraries, you know that it's not just books. There's a lot of other media there that's provided, other services such as test proctoring, lots of events, especially. The library has been focused a lot on events and educational things, which are available to everyone and open to the public, so it's, it's a lot more than just books. So if you have questions for me, happy to answer them, otherwise we'll see what the Commission's pleasure is.
I did want to know when the next time Commissioner Weber was reading to the kids at the library would be again.
Yeah, I represented the fire department and got to read three books about fire trucks. That was really fun.
Awesome.
You mentioned some data that Dana had sent over to you. Where is that? You're quoting from it with these numbers.
She just gave me, she just gave me this, which I can share with the Commission. I just have one copy of this. I don't believe that's in your annual report, but, so I just shared it audibly. But I can certainly send that over to, to you all. She just thought it was a little bit, just interesting to give you a little bit more of an idea of the number of patrons and then the percentage that comes from the county of the, of the budget.
I also see Commissioner Schramm in here on the walking tour. So we need Commissioner Weber to read us the book and Commissioner Schramm to give us a walking tour. I love it. All right, thank you, City Manager Leon, for representing Dana tonight and walking us through that agreement with that walkthrough. What is the pleasure of the Commission?
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Is there any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries.
Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-226 regarding Chan Gurney Municipal Airport Hangar Sublease for location number 15. This would be from Chris Nelson, Lisi, to Dale Baki, Sub-Liße. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries.
Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-231 and resolution 22-60 regarding vehicle purchase for a 2023 Dodge Durango SUV from Broadway Motors for the Yankton Police Department. This would replace a 2015 Ford Explorer. And the Broadway Motors did meet the state bid price of $59,608. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
So it's not too often that we have a local dealership that's able to participate, so that's good to see. Has something changed with the folks at the local Dodge dealership? Are they now part of this ongoing opportunity with the city, or is this more of just an incidental opportunity?
Not sure about that. Commissioner Mybaum, our department heads frequently call our local, when we have a vehicle purchase, they call our local providers to see if they're willing to match the state bid or the bid that we're utilizing. Very rarely has it occurred that they're able to. In this case, they were. So we'll continue to make that call to give our folks the opportunity whenever we, we purchase.
Other commission discussion?
Are the Ford guys and the police department going to be upset that they're going to a Dodge?
That's a question for Commander Rothenberg. He wants to go to the back to the Crown Vex. Yes. You have to go to the mic.
You have to go to the mic if you're going to speak and not just smile. Thank you.
You may have to turn it on, Commander.
For, what? It's on, okay. For state bid, there wasn't much out there. There was Ford F-150s or Dodge pickups, Dodge Chargers or Durangos. That was the only thing offered at the time.
Plus your night glasses probably look cooler in that one, maybe? All right. Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries.
Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-216 regarding a funding request for a commercial shade structure at Sartoma Park. Too many S's all tied together there. Before I ask what the pleasure of the Commission is, because this is an agenda item being requested tonight with a, I wouldn't say discrepancy, but a suggestion coming from city staff on how to approach this, I am going to ask that we listen to the proposal first and ask questions, and then ask for what the pleasure of the Commission is. We will do that for Agenda Seven and Eight, just so everybody's aware because of the discrepancy and the ask that's being done tonight. So letting everybody be aware of that. So I don't know, Amy, if we want to start off with you, and then we'll ask Mr. Steppit to come to the podium, or how you want to approach this.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you, Mayor, and I'll do my best here. And Todd, maybe you can fill in the blanks of what I might get, I might miss. Friends of Sartoma Group have, for a long time, helped the City of Yankton with amenities in our park. And so they have a long history of doing that for us, with us, much like other groups we have in the community. A lot of the improvements that people would like to see, we just can't fund with city funds. So we could spend a long time listing all the support they've given us, but, so we have a long history with the Friends of Sartoma Group. One of the areas that they identified, which our park staff and staff and others would agree with being a need, is a shade structure over the four seating areas in the south boreplex at Sartoma Park. I had one experience there when my nephew was playing softball, and it was a very warm experience. I mean, it's hot there. And so folks that experienced those fields know that in the middle of the summer, you need some, you need some shade, and it's definitely a need there. So as we do in Yankton, we try to work with, you know, local industry and come up with ways that we can provide solutions that have as little of impact as possible on budgets, whether that means city budget or that means folks' money that they've donated. And Todd worked with Friends of Sartoma, and they visited with a number of local folks who we thought might be able to manufacture something. And I think everyone kind of came to the conclusion that, you know, this is something that really probably needs to be anchored into the ground in a way that's permanent and have the actual structures, the shade structures that can be removed in the winter and fall, much like we do at the Aquatic Center, that are commercial grade and durable and kind of do it right. You know, get it done, do it good, and get it, get it looking as it should. So aesthetically and also just for the amount of the investment, everyone kind of came to the conclusion that a commercial shade structure should probably be the right solution. Of course, that solution is a very expensive one. So the quote for four structures is approximately, the four structures is approximately $34,000. That doesn't include installation. So the total with installation is approximately $50,000. And the Friends of Sartoma are making a BBB request to the Commission to complete that this year so that when we move forward into the softball-baseball season, there will, those structures will be available. So you have a little history there in your packet about some of the other projects that Friends of Sartoma have helped us with or have done for us and all the volunteer hours they put in. The group does have a little bit of money on hand, which they may or may not want to choose to put towards a project, but there has been discussion about them contributing $5,000 towards that project. And along with the next item you're going to request, I'm certainly, I spoke with Mr. Steppit, certainly not opposed to the shade structure or opposed to the Friends of Sartoma or the softball, folks having, making a good impression on people when we have the tournaments coming up next summer. But I'm very uncertain locally and nationally about the economy and about the timing of these requests. I'm just advising you to be very cautious about awarding anything that's not associated with essential services. very uncertain locally and nationally about the economy and about the timing of these requests. I'm just advising you to be very cautious about awarding anything that's not associated with essential services right now. My inclination would be to say we should hold off and discuss this during our outside agency request in our next budget session or perhaps come up with something rather than the full amount and request some more assistance from either the Friends Group or another group. Of course, that's your purview to decide as you see fit. With both, if both requests this evening are fully funded, we believe the direction of the BBB will continue, well, will go down, but we believe there'll be about $300,000 balance. And that is still a lot of money, of course, at the end of the year, but again, just feeling uncertain about what's coming before us in the economy. I don't know that that's a position you want to be in. So that's what I have to say. And if Todd wants to add something to that that I missed, or perhaps Mr. Steppit has more information, I haven't been involved in all the meetings, so they might have some other details for you. Thank you.
This is on?
Aye.
Thanks for having me tonight. I want to clarify the group that we are associated with. So Friends of Saratoma Park, it's not associated with Saratoma Association. Just want to make that clear. This is a newly formed group that we just formed about a year ago. The reason we formed this group is for the first time, youth softball, youth girl softball, Saratoma Baseball, which is the Youth Baseball Association, and adult softball, the presidents have agreed to work together for field improvement. So this is, we've, that field's been on there for 45, 50 years. Tom, you would know. And for the first time, everybody's working together. Todd's been great to work with. The city's been, been great. So we needed to start a new association to fund our money through us. So one association didn't have to collect it all and disperse it all and so forth. So Friends of Saratoma got started. Our first project was putting jock's boxes in all four diamonds, level Diamond D. We completely put in a brand-new batter's box, or sorry, batting cage. And then this last year, we extended it by 15 feet. So we've done a lot. There's been about 15 people that have been working pretty hard on it, along with the city's help. The shade structure is one of our big goals. We wanted to finish by this spring, but after finding out there's utilities under there and water lines under there, we can't dig, we can't tie into the poles and the fencing. So we need to get a structure that can be put in. And also with the structure that we're looking at, it can also be taken away and be used for others, other events, River Days, whatever other events you guys want to use it for. So keep that in mind as well. It doesn't have to stay down there Some things we're up against right now, for example, Girl Softball Association, their tournament they have every Father's Day brings 1,100 to 1,400 kids or people to Yankton every year. Our tournaments, Saratoma's holding, YBA's holding down there, Girl Softball, even Adult Softball, they're getting harder and harder to get people to come because we're up against all these new facilities throughout the state. So we got to make sure our facility's up to date and feasible to people that want to come play here and so forth. We do get good feedback from everybody that comes. They love coming to Yankton. But at the same time, Saratoma Baseball Field has, that boreplex hasn't seen any major upgrades in 45 years. So it's time we step up, work together and make this happen. Any questions?
I have one, and it might be more for Todd, because I'm curious, and you said something, and I saw it in the commission packet, that we can't, and I appreciate being able to move it, so I guess I would have two questions. One, we have poles in the ground and that type of equipment down there already. So I guess I'm curious why one more pole might not make a difference if there's an alternative, maybe cheaper would not be a better word for that, more economical way to do this, when we already have poles and all that in the ground, which would be electrical and underground plumbing that's affected by that.
So the fencing that's there is small enough in diameter that it's not going to be able to hold wind load. So any type of shade tarp that we're going to put up would require either four new poles on each corner or this coming from this company with one pole in the middle. We did talk about having a mobile option. That would have been the, what you see out at the SAC, for, I don't know an official name, so I'll call them a cattle shade structure with the tire, the tractor tire at the bottom and the concrete poured in it. We talked about that option. I'm just not sure that's the image that we want in that park. So that's where we settled on the professional, commercial-grade design with just the one pole in the middle, not having to worry about getting four different poles in. Again, the backstop angles, we've got the higher, again, with what was done at the north complex, the giant poles that were just redone when the turf project was done. So they're only five, six years old, much larger in diameter. They are on the corners of the backstop, so tying in and having things square or flush, whatever term you want to use, pretty easy. The smaller diameter poles, the light poles that are, that are bigger in diameter are further down the line. So it just doesn't work to try to tie everything in with some poles that are there. We would have to put new poles in the ground, unfortunately.
So, where, sorry. So I'm still confused then, where is the one pole that we have to put in? Where would that go in for each?
So behind the backstops are two sets of bleachers. The one pole would go in between the two sets of bleachers. So it would throw some shade on each set of the bleachers. Directly behind the backstop, two sets of bleachers.
Correct. Okay.
Pole would go in the middle.
Okay.
Rectangular in shape. So, could be square, but.
So Todd, is there a ideal rated wind load that we need to be on the lookout for?
No. So we, Jeff and I, the ones on the north end, the steel poles, when we did it, I'm not sure who we worked with. I thought we had worked with the Reisman Engineering. Nobody's real sure on that, that they had done some engineering of wind load of what the tarps could handle, what the posts that are there that could handle. On this project, we would need to do the same thing. We would need to get an engineer to look at, since we're designing it, what posts can hold what type of wind load and strength on what each of those shade tarps is designed for. And so we would have to find somebody that would do that for us. So buying commercially, that's already been done. So.
And these are, these are single pole units? And then they're, and they're tying off to something else?
Nope.
Or they're just?
Just a single pole unit. Think of the shade structures that we have at the new Aquatic Center.
Okay.
Those have four posts on each end. Again, they're kind of like a house or a barn shape. They've got the middle pole in the middle and they angle down. These are just going to have the one big pole in the middle. And then the bracing comes out in four directions and they're, and it is cabled just like those are and meets all the safety and wind spec and all of those type of things because they're commercially made.
Okay. So basically, an industrial umbrella of some sort?
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Shade structure. Yep.
So then I'm just wondering, it sounds like, so there may have been an opportunity for mobile units?
Would be the cattle. Would be the cattle. And we got a quote, Dave Kokish got a rough quote, so we don't have anything official on paper, but those are going to be between $6,000 and $8,000 each.
So then I'm just, I'm just wondering if we're talking about 75 mile an hour winds? That would typically be something that we'd have, maybe a day's notice, two days' notice, possibly a week. But just given Saratoma Park's proximity to the Park and Rec Department, if we had that kind of a heads up from our meteorologists, we could move those to the Park and Recs Department or someplace where they could be disassembled or taken down so there isn't a damage. Because I highly doubt any tournaments or games would be happening if there's going to be that level of wind. That's, that'd be my take.
Yeah, they're mobile. So yeah, they could be moved.
Wait, these that are here in front of us tonight are mobile or they're not?
No, no, no. The cat, he's talking about the cattle shade.
Okay.
That we have at the, the one that sits out at the SAC.
I guess I would like to counter that and say, I think we've all experienced plenty of windstorms that have come up that we didn't necessarily know were going to happen. Just thunderstorms, that type of thing. If we were to be moving those every time that there was a chance of a storm, I think we would be, I think we'd be moving them a lot during the, during the summer months. I think we've all experienced, I know I've experienced out on the lake, being out on the boat and everything's smooth and all of a sudden something comes up that wasn't, wasn't, I wasn't expecting. And then you're trying to get off. And I would, I would be hesitant to put something up that, and with the thought of, we're going to move it off when it's inclement weather.
Yeah, but we have one at the SAC. How many times have you had to move that? Never? That's my thought.
Never moved it. And the shade structure that's over on the north fields, the two turf fields down there, they're, it's a different, obviously, but it's not as strong as what we're looking at. And they've been up every summer, all summer for the last five years. And we've reused it every year with no issues.
The one at the SAC, have we moved that unit?
No, that was moved in by youth softball and has sat there ever since. I don't think it was meant to be permanent, but the company that made them never came back to get it. So there it sits.
Well, don't tell them because it's nice to have shade there, too. So.
Can you see if we can get a couple more of those?
Can they forget about a couple more?
So I have a question. I guess maybe this would be more than for the city manager. So if we were to fund in whole or in part, both of these agenda items here tonight related to baseball, I suppose, different than how we funded Heartland Humane Society earlier this year, it's not like we have to move triple B funds into Park and Rec so that they can then, you know, make another account whole, basically. This would be, we'd truly be able to fund this out of the triple B because it fits the definition of what those funds are supposed to be used for, whether it's maintenance of the fields that we have or construction costs. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I think you could, you could move it into Parks Capital if you wanted to and fund it out of Parks Capital. But I think beans is, you know, this is a promotional, you know, the baseball and softball is a tourism, promotional, economic development function in some way beyond just the Parks and Rec function that it would fall under what I'd be comfortable with saying is, you know, okay, in triple B. So if the commission wants to do it that way, you certainly can. You could also, I mentioned this to one of you who asked me about this agenda item, you could, you know, not do something in Park Capital that's currently budgeted to do one, this, or both. I don't know if we have that much Park Capital, but you know, there's, there's those options as well. You could fund it out of somewhere else in the general fund, too. But it does fall under triple B.
So I'm just wondering, if we were to make a motion on this, I'm just wondering if it would be beneficial, since there's, I think, a fair amount of specifics that still have to be worked out between the city, between the volunteers and the groups, on what these structures may even end up being. But if we wanted to, we could fund up to 50,000 from the triple B to Park and Recs and let them sort it out over the next couple of months as to what they do believe is best for that area, whether it's mobile or permanent. But we could make that as a motion here tonight if we wanted to.
Yes.
If I may, all you're doing is complicating bookkeeping. We can spend it right out of the BBB. And for the project, it'll either be in a special projects line or we'll add a new line item to that. But moving it to the general fund or moving it to Parks and Rec doesn't change anything. You're still spending it out of BBB. You're just moving it to Parks first and then spending it. So my recommendation would be you just spend it out of BBB, if that's your wish, just to fund it with BBB.
And so in that case, we could make it not necessarily open-ended, but to have a threshold in place. We could approve up to 50,000 towards this particular project. And it could come in lower depending on what everyone ends up deciding is the best type of structure for Saratoma. Okay.
I guess I have a question. And again, since these next two agenda items are so closely tied together, Amy, in our packet, the recommendation was to the request, both groups, hold off until the 2023 budget process and make an outside agency request at this time for us and for the public and for all groups involved. What does that process look like, timeline of that? And if they would go through that process, when would funds be available if approved?
So what we've done in the past is around about May, late April, early May, we send out information to outside agencies that have talked to us throughout the year or that we've, the commission's traditionally contributed to, let's take, I don't know, Yankton Thrive for an example, to fill out application to give you guys some better idea of where funding would be directed, how it would be used, et cetera. And so you guys take a look at those and then I make a recommendation based on sort of historic and what I've heard from you throughout the year. And that's your triple B recommendation. And then you change, you add, subtract during the budget session. These are one-time requests. Although we do give Yankton Baseball, I believe is one of those groups that we do provide some small nominal amount to annually. But these are capital one-time requests, however, that would work that way. I'd reach out to the groups and we'd have them fill out the application. And although you now have most of the information that would be in the application and get less costs changed, and then you'd make a determination at that time. The reason that I suggested that is just because I'm feeling pretty uneasy about, about just the economic situation and uneasy about where our revenues will come in. We've, just this month, seen in the triple B, a negative month. I'm hoping that's not the case going forward. I just don't know. So I just have a little bit more uncertainty than I typically would. And our balance continues to go down year over year in that fund. But, you know, you certainly can request that. But if they're, these are time-sensitive projects, you can make one-time funding allocations as well from the triple B as a special request.
This might be nitpicking, but I get the Friends of Saratoma are asking for these funds. But it would be triple B purchasing any shade structures if approved? So who then is the owner of the shade structures, especially if they're mobile?
Normally, when we do, when there's any improvement made to the park, in the park, it becomes property of the city of Yankton. Think the turf fields at north, the north turf fields. Once those are installed, that's property of the city of Yankton.
Yeah. And I think that brings up a good point, Mayor, is that, you know, these groups have made things occur, which otherwise wouldn't have. So think pickleball. Pickleball, a couple of years ago, was here and wanted to talk about how do we get some things going? And so through the course of the year, talked with Todd about pickleball improvements. And so Todd and I worked with them and they said, you know, if we're able to fund some of the court resurfacing, would the city be willing to match that and be able to get some more outdoor pickleball space? And so that's what we presented to you then in a capital budget plan, is a grant, so to speak, so to speak, match between pickleball and the city. And that's how we're able to move that project forward. So we've worked with Yankton Baseball, for example, in the past. They paid for a large portion of the turf that's there. The city paid for some labor and materials and it kind of got moved forward in the, in the capital. And I can't say for sure if we spent capital there or triple B, but it got moved ahead because of the investment of that private group. So we do appreciate and we're getting a lot of improvements from these groups that we, otherwise, we just wouldn't do because we just can't afford to do them.
And I think that brings up a good point. And it takes me to where my head goes on this. So first of all, I just want to thank Jeff and the Friends of Saratoma Group for coming together and sharing a vision because it helps us better allocate our resources and plan for the future. So I think that's great. And I look forward to continuing to work with you. But in regards to this request specifically at this time, it's out of the ordinary that we would fund a project like this outside of our normal budget schedule unless- we would fund a project like this outside of our normal budget schedule unless there's some, you know, unless there's an emergency or unless you were saying, we're raising, we've got 50% of the funds, can the city fund the rest? So in this case, we're being asked to fund pretty much the whole project and I just have a hard time seeing us, I have a hard time agreeing to fund it outside of our normal budget process. I just don't see the-
And I would look at the project as everything we're doing, not just one thing. You know, we've raised over $16,000 so far. Our goal is to raise, to sell another 20 banners, which are bringing a little more than $8,000, but for what we've done already down there and a goal is to build, to put in a new shed down there, new netting for foul balls, redo the lights. There's a lot of projects that still need to be done, so it's not just this one project. It's, I look at it as a group, as a group effort here.
Yeah, and I would agree. I mean, having witnessed the thousands of hours of volunteer time that's been happening down at Sotoma, just in the time that I've had kids down there, it's pretty impressive and it's heartwarming to see that a lot of folks just decide to step up. Some of them don't even have kids. They just have a long history of baseball and softball here in the city. I guess where, where my head is at, I would have a hard time saying no, just considering the momentum that has occurred within your group, essentially representing multiple groups and the goodwill and essentially the opportunity now to buy into that. You know, we mentioned the, the Mother's Day tournament, there's a Father's Day tournament, there's big softball tournament coming up here next July. Just in my time, this is going back now 10, 12 years with my kids having been down there, it's not as enjoyable when it's 95-degree humid heat that you're having to sit through these games and imagine the kids, too, out in the fields when they come in from the, from the field and they're in their dugout. It's, it's kind of like the parents are sitting out in the sun the whole time. So, so again, just kind of going back to where my head is at this, I really don't see any reason why we can't support it essentially in full, although I don't get the feeling that we'll have to in the end. But it is a small part of a lot of things that are happening, both in volunteer times and also donations that continue to come in for, for the various groups and now Friends of Sotoma as well. So that's where my head has, head is at at this and I hope other commissioners see the opportunity here as well. Looking ahead to 2023, I guess I've always been the more, more, I don't know, how do you just say it? When I see that our budgets come across as predicting 0% growth and 1% growth, that's been our history for a long time and that's never been the case. And the last few years has been no different. So I, I don't disagree, I don't agree that we're only predicting 3% growth, I think, for next year. We're a very special city and I want to make sure that with all the visitors that come to Yankton, for each one, every one of these tournaments, that they get to see a piece of that as well when they're here. And hopefully that opens up more opportunities for us. The triple B funds in particular are, are for creating more triple B funds, basically. And here again, this is a perfect opportunity. We're talking about a lot of visitors coming into Yankton for these kinds of tournaments. And the same will be for the next agenda item here as well, I have no doubt. So again, I can't think of a better opportunity and particularly better use of these funds than for what we're talking about here tonight, making it a better experience for not only citizens here, but the visitors who will be coming to Yankton.
All right. Mr. Stuppett, anything else you want to share with the commission that we didn't get a chance to discuss that you feel is pertinent before I ask for the pleasure of the commission?
Nope, thanks for your time.
All right. Commission, any other clarification questions that you have for Todd or for city manager Leon before we get to me asking for what the commission would like to do? I want to ask that first.
I've got, I've got a quick question regarding the timeline. If we were to put it into the budget, right, what is being proposed? And timeline for, for us putting that in and then that being approved? If, does that make sense as far as that question goes?
If you're approving it tonight, if you're approving the request tonight, whatever amount you're approving, we could include into the supplement on the 12th?
I think he's asking if, if we would go ahead with waiting for the 2023 request and doing it-
Thank you.
Not the right way, I shouldn't say that, but actually doing it for your recommendation, when would funds be-
Per your recommendation.
Per your recommendation, when would funds be available?
Then they wouldn't be available until the following budget year, which would then be, you know, January 2024, which is, you know, outside of the group's desired time to have that in place. They're, they're hoping that this improvement can be done prior to this next season, so. But yeah, it would be sort of-
In 2024.
Yeah, this time next year before we're then able to spend funds roughly. I mean, we'll be, you had a month away from January, but-
Okay. All right, so we, we would miss the entire season-
Correct.
This coming season.
If that's what you choose to do.
If that's what we choose to do, sure. All right, thank you.
Yes, thanks for clarifying that for a timeline. I'm sure that's helpful to know as well. Any other questions pertinent to the commission to ask? Go ahead, Commissioner Scham.
Al, do you happen to have the information for the triple B front, where it is currently compared to what we had budgeted back in 2022? I'm looking at our, I'm trying to find it here and I'm, I'm not able to find it.
I don't have it in front of me unless, Dwayne, do you, are you able to pull that up?
I could see Dwayne working back there, so just pause for a moment. And I'll just say, one of the reasons why we didn't put a lot of information about where the triple B is, is because we don't know where we're going to end up with revenue. So when we plan for the budget, we, we plan for the revenue, but we don't know in fact which, what revenue is going to come in or what other things are going to be spent throughout the year. And sometimes we don't end up spending things that are budgeted, so that's why it's a little difficult for us to say exactly, but-
My, my quick guesstimate would be that if we were to fully fund the Friends of Sotoma Park request here tonight, whether or not the entirety of that 50,000 is used and let's say we only do half, like 87,000 of a subsequent agenda item here tonight, we'd still be over 400,000 with this, with this dollar amount that's in here. We'd still be at 400,000 in the triple B.
Yeah, I think I estimated that if you spent, if you, if you funded both fully, you'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of 300. So yeah, you'd be, you know, 380 or so. Those are, you know, general numbers, which is a lot of money and it's not a lot of money. Especially when, you know, things are coming in the way they're coming in and, and I don't know what else you may want to, to take on here this next coming year.
I haven't pulled up last year's worksheet yet, but I'm still working on that. So we projected to end this year at 575,802, which was estimating a 5% growth for this year for the triple B. And I think the last sales tax report that Al sent out is we were at four and a half, I think, year to date. Does that sound right? I haven't pulled that back up yet.
We're looking, hang on.
4.5.
Excuse me, 4.55.
And then just give me another minute. I think I'll be able to find last year's triple B worksheets. I should be able to give us what our projection was for 2022 a year ago.
So there has been some discussion of funding half of the project. Where does that, what does that do? Does that mean that the baseball groups or Friends of Sotoma are going to raise the remainder of the funds or what, what is the vision if we funded half of it tonight?
You know, I, I propose that as an alternate if you, if you, only because we've done that in other circumstances where we've said, we've had groups either come to us and say, you know, hey, we'll put up half the cost for an improvement if you'll raise the other. I mean, that would have to be a discussion you'd have with the Friends group or with Yankton Baseball about, about their individual projects.
Is it, I want to, while Dwayne's doing that, because I do have a question for you. So a great question, if it's done at half, what is your vision there, Jeff? Would it be maybe you get the two structures this year and then try to get two structures next year or would you just scrap it all together? What would be your thoughts there?
I would think initially, without talking to the rest of the group, we'd probably do one this year, but that's also going to take away from our other projects that we have planned. The shed that's down there right now that's holding all of our equipment has a hole in it. It's been down there for, Tom, do you know how long that shed's been down there? 40 years? I don't know. It's been down there a long time. The shed needs to be replaced. That was our next project. Then the, the nets for the foul balls was a big project we wanted to get accomplished as well. So that, we can do that, but like I said, it's going to take away from that.
Thank you for that, I was just curious. Dwayne, do you have anything for us yet?
Yeah, this is the worksheet from July of 2021 and I apologize because I'm not sure 100% it's exactly the last version that you guys worked from, but at that time we were projecting to end 2022 at 461,189 and that was reflecting a 2.88% growth in the triple B, which I think we ended up five-ish for 21? Or 11, 11.6 for 21. I better not say for sure. I'm not 100% confident on that number.
I don't have, excuse me, I have the dollars, but not the percentage.
Commissioner Scham, does that answer your question-ish? Not really-ish?
Yeah, ish. You know, it's, I, I tend to lean towards what Tony was saying is that we, I like to feel we're going to be in a better financial position than a 0 to 1% budget. 300,000 seems a little risky to me to try to take too much from that, but I'm also thinking it's going to be a glass full versus empty approach going into next year. So I, it, I, I was just curious to see, it's, I have our budget pulled up as just from previous year's balance and carrying it over to what we projected this year, trying to figure out if, you know, where we're going to end up fall, but that's, it's hard to predict. You know, we're close to what we are estimating for at four and a half, we thought of 5% growth, so that's, that's pretty close right now.
All right. If there are no other clarification questions, I would open it up to ask, ask what the pleasure of the commission is.
I would move that the city commission fund up to 50,000 from the triple B for the Sotoma Park shade structures. And I would ask for a second.
And actually, I'll second that.
Sorry, I was writing, we do have a motion and a second to fund up to 50,000 from the triple B. Is there any commission discussion?
I just, sitting here listening to the conversation tonight, I, I definitely struck me that we, all of the volunteer hours is what is hard for me to say no to this because they have put in tons of effort into this facility and for us to try to help them out to keep that momentum, that's a good word, moving forward in my mind is a good use of funds, even though we may be getting a little tight on what's comfortable in the budget. I still think it's, it's a good way to help keep that positive momentum going forward for the group that's working on down there and all the families that come into town, all their current families that use the facility, trying to make it as the best facility we can with the money we have available.
Any other commission discussion?
I guess the point that I have is I'm, I'm going back and forth on, on this, mainly because I like to be able to budget for these things a little bit more than just, it just comes up and, and let's do it. I like to take a little bit more time usually for these types of events, but I also know that by doing that, we're, we're not going to have it for next year, where if we were able to do it now, I think we could have it for, for next year. I guess where my mind is landing at right now is possibly supporting this. However, on the other side, I think, I just, I'm, I'm, I don't know that we can do, I don't think we can do both of these things at this, at this juncture. That's not to say that I won't change my mind when the next one comes, comes up. However, the fact that this could get done this year, I think has, has value. And, and I do agree with Tony in that this is what triple B is, is for, or this is a, this fits well inside of that, inside of what, what triple B is designated for. So I don't know, like I said, I'm going back and forth on it. Just thought more than anything, I would just voice my back and forth.
Can I add something?
Absolutely.
Okay, just hearing what Ben just said there, I just want to make it clear that you guys are aware that we did not intend to throw this on you guys. We intended to do this all ourselves, to do it by burying the ground, burying the poles in four to six different areas. And once we learned we couldn't do that and we had to go this other route, that's when we found out it's too big for us to, to fund. That's why we're here tonight. We would have liked to do this the correct way and put it on a budget for a year out. So I, I apologize for throwing this on you guys tonight, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Stuppett. Other commission discussion?
Having spent many hours sitting on those boiling hot benches watching my son play baseball, it's, it's been wonderful and warm at the same time. I just wonder, is there any, is there any stomach? I fully support baseball, but I also wonder kind of what Ben's thinking, too, is I'm afraid it's, it's maybe too much all at once, but is there any stomach for maybe doing half? Would anybody else be feeling that? I realize there's a motion.
I was just going to say, Commissioner, we have a motion and so it would have to depend on the vote of that or somebody would have to amend it if you wanted to amend it and then you'd have to have a second. We would start there.
I'm fully in favor of these projects, just not now. 50%, I'm willing to entertain that, but as the motion sits currently, I can't support it at this time.
I guess this would be a question more for the city manager. Maybe can you think of some other like projects? Is it typically the, in your experience, is it typically the pattern of the city commission that if something like this is to happen, the requesting entity or entities should have to come up with half of it?
No, I would say in recent years, that has what's, that has what's been moved, moved things forward on a quicker timeline. So we're able to budget for a very limited amount of capital projects in, in parks. A lot of those, these things happen to fall in parks because it's what, you know, people use and see and, and they have needs or desires that they want to see in our fields or improvements they'd like to see. And so they talk to us about them and we talk to them about our limited capital and a lot of times our capital is spent on just fixing what we have or buying a truck or buying the, you know, cherry picker or buying some banners just to kind of keep up with the expenses of what we already have. And so then it's put forward to us, you know, hey, what if we're able to contribute? And so recently, that's been more of a, of a, of a trend. I, I said to somebody, you know, when we were talking about our strategic plan, Westside Park moved kind of forward into our, into being or that project came into being a little bit quicker than we had anticipated because of the private sector contributions of, of Era and the sisters and, and the McBay family. So, you know, same with the turf project initially. I mean, I think probably we would have loved to have done turf down at Riverside Field earlier. There was just no way we could fit it into the capital budget, but we, baseball came to us and we worked through that together as a partnership. So, you know, I would say it depends upon the commission and depends upon the groups and, and how- and, and how, you know, interested they are. There are some groups that are funding things, you know, on their own, sports groups, and haven't made asks as well, so it's kind of a mixed bag. But, you know, again, whatever, whatever the commission feels is, is right, I too am not against shade or, or baseball. I'm, I'm hopefully not viewed as a pessimist, but I'm trying to do the best I can to make sure I'm safeguarding the Triple B and the budget, and looking at it as, you know, conservatively as possible, making you guys aware of what, what the realities are. And the next project that's going to come forward after tonight is also going to be a good project, because we just have that kind of spirit in our community, so.
So, I'm thinking about, yeah, there's a, there's a safety element to the next project that we're talking about, and we haven't really talked about the safety aspect to the Friends of Sotomo Park requests here as well. For the moms and dads who've been at these games, how many times do you hear from behind you, ball, right? And everybody's looking up, not wanting to get hit by a ball? So, especially when you have a quadplex, like what we're talking about here, it's a very common thing. And having these shade structures, there's a, you know, essentially, there's a public safety component to this, too.
Probably heat stroke is probably more of a safety component.
There is. My, my middle child Sawyer, he actually got smacked right along the side of his cheek, and the ball came in so fast that I didn't even have time to react. And, I mean, that's when he was little and, you know, just running around, and that's, it happens. Shade structures can provide an additional safety component in a quadplex like this, because you'll have, you know, players over on Field C, ball comes up, and it's parents in Field D who are watching their kids, who have to look out for balls that are coming their way. Foul balls are a real thing. So, I'm just, I, I, I ask because maybe there's, do we have public safety funds? Do we have carryforward balances and public safety accounts somewhere that maybe can be re-appropriated for?
Well, public safety is, is, you know, our, our fire and police and, and civil defense, and I'm, I'm not sure that's the appropriate place to, to expend this, this kind of a project. Public safety part of everything we do as well, and, you know, we can always put that component in any kind of discussion that we have. I think it's, if the commission wants to spend, you know, $50,000 or a portion of $50,000 on the shade structures, if five of you do, then, then it's, then you do, yeah, I mean, it could happen, it can happen if you have the shade structures too, but I, I don't know. But I, I don't know that we have $50,000 somewhere in the public safety that we, we probably have, the line items are probably more suited to be under either Parks Capital or General Fund for this.
Todd, I do have a question for you. So, this proposal from Landscape Structures, Inc., out of Delano, Minnesota, it says that this, the quote is good for 60 days. I don't see a date on this quote. When, when did this quote come in, or I guess, when did you realize that this was, doing a, a less expensive route was going to be, it was not going to, it was not going to work? And the reason I ask is because this may not even be a good proposal quote at this time.
Other questions from the city commission?
And, and I'm sorry, this might, this is more of a Triple B question then. So, with Heartland Humane Society, we had only funded half of their request, and they were going to be coming back to us, provide a postmortem about their, I think that's what I called it, you know, a follow-up basically. And then, and then we give them the second half of their request. Have they indicated at all when they're going to be coming back? Because I believe it was $45,000 in total, or was it more than that? $45,000 in total?
It was 45 in total, and they, on their first request, she had mistakenly think, thought it was 40, because if you remember, the first request was somewhere between 40 and 45. The commission okayed 45. When she sent her first one in was just like two, two to three weeks ago, and she only requested 20, so outstanding is $25,000. And I've got a note here to ask Amy if they've asked to come before, or if we've asked them to come before the commission, because we really only have one more meeting, one full meeting.
I haven't asked, they have not talked to me, but I'll be calling them tomorrow, it sounds like. So, no, just the one payment.
Other commission discussion?
So, kind of following Commissioner Mybaum's train of thought there, so if, if we were to, if someone was to amend the motion and suggest half of, of the request, could they then, they could come back and potentially ask for the rest during the budget session?
Sounds like they would only do a portion of the project then, but, sure.
But it would be a start?
Sure.
Okay.
Other commission discussion?
Would we need to make an amendment to the motion?
Correct, Commissioner.
So, I would amend the motion that we approve $25,000 out of the Triple B fund.
We have amended motion to do $25,000 out of Triple B, is there a second? Hearing no second, then it fails. So, we're back to the original motion of, up to $50,000 from the Triple B. Anybody in the public like to make a comment to this motion? Roll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
No.
Benson?
No.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
I will be abstaining, as my husband is president of the Softball Association. But with that, that's a vote of four to three, so motion would pass. I'm going to ask Mr. Steppit to sell my chair that has the built-in shade structure on top of it, since I will be sitting at the softball fields this summer. So, you can sell that, and you can keep the donation, right? All right, with that, then we move on to number eight, under new business, which is consideration of memorandum 22-217 regarding a funding request for the Riverside Park baseball field in your commission packet. Well, I'll let, just like we did with softball, Friends of Sotoma, I will ask commis- Commissioner, I don't know if that's a promotion or a demotion. I can't even comment on that. So, I'm just going to turn it over to City Manager Leon to start walking us through the proposal, and then I do see Mr. Nelson is here tonight from the Yankton Baseball Association, and we'll give him a chance, just as we did with Mr. Steppit.
I have Todd Larson still here at the microphone to help me out, but the, the City of Yankton has had a long, a good partnership with Yankton Baseball, with all the renovations at Riverside Field through a number of years, and, and we, we want to continue that relationship. Most recently, you know, that turf that I had mentioned has really, I think, promoted the use of the baseball field, and really had gotten more use from the field, and we've done some capital projects as well at Riverside Park to make some improvements, including making the bathrooms a little more three-season, so that it can be enjoyed, when, the bathrooms can be used when the, when the turf and the field is being enjoyed. So, the current project isn't just about aesthetics, but also safety player of the players and fans. The turf improvements that they're speaking about, and I'm going to pretty much read this, because that talks about my baseball knowledge, include the warning track, which will allow the players to feel safe when diving or falling during game play. And in the past, the rocks have been used in the warning track, were serviceable for maintenance, but didn't protect players from injury. In addition to the warning track improvement, the concept for new interior fencing protects players from baseballs being hit into the bullpen area, as well as baseballs being thrown from the bullpen towards the dugouts and onto the field during game play. And also, the dugout project will allow players to be further away from hitters in the batter's box, and there will be a fence for protection from a line drive, that, line drive hits in front of the dugouts. The project will not only, you know, assist Yankton Baseball, but also Mount Marty University in adult amateur baseball with player safety. So, we have been speaking with the groups, and we were looking at, how can we make this project come together? So, so we have also been in contact with, with Mount Marty and with Jason to talk about how can we make this happen, and, and we were requested to see if we could provide some supplies and labor, sort of as an in-kind approach to this, which we have done in the past. As we've talked with other things, we, we do not have the same labor or materials available that we once did, and, you know, that's not something we could provide in kind. And so, we did suggest to Yankton Baseball and, and the groups there that, you know, they come and ask you for a portion of the project. And so, in discussing with the full board, Mr. Nelson has indicated that they discussed what percent of the project YBA would like to ask the city for, and with the additional supplies and labor that, that we're not able to provide, all the increased safety measures to the community, et cetera, they, they would like to request that the city consider paying for 100% of the project. And that's not typically how YBA approaches their projects, but they're asking to do that as well, because they have other capital projects that they would like to work on for improvements of the fields that are on the horizon. So, turf costs there, $102,664. Excavation and dirt work, a little over $26,000. Fencing, a little over $24,000. Concrete work, approximately $4,000 with $20,000 in labor. So, a total with all labor, about $173,784, or $174,000 roughly there for their request. So, again, just with the revenue and expenses being where they are, I'm, anything unbudgeted that's not associated with essential services, I'm just thinking we ought to be very cautious, or you ought to be very cautious. My inclination would be, let's hold off, but then my second inclination is, of course, if it's important to the commission, that you consider funding a partial, and a partial amount of this project, and see about the capacity Yankton Baseball has to, to raise or to provide the, the remaining amount. So, again, this is our field, so there is a lot of, our field is our responsibility. However, this is a project we, we probably wouldn't budget for alone without the help of a partnership. So, same kind of discussion that we had with the previous project, only on a bigger scale. So, I will let you ask any questions that I can answer, or Mr. Nelson, or Mr. Larson.
Todd, anything you wanted to add while Jason makes his way to the podium?
No, I don't think so.
Not yet? Okay. We will turn it over to Jason Nelson.
Again, thank you for having us on the agenda here. Yeah, we, this is, this is a big project for us. We actually are hosting the State Legion Tournament this summer, which we have not, not hosted since 2011. We did feel like we did need some improvements, and we felt like this was a good time to do it now. Obviously, not always a good time for the city portion to do this, but in the years past, like, like, we've talked about before, we've had a good relationship, whether it's a, a portion or percentage of, of the payment of the loan that we've been able to take out, and, and the portions of that, you know, they can go, you know, from a few, a few thousand dollars to, you know, 40 to $50,000 over the past, you know, few projects that we've had. One of the things I do want, answering some of your guys' questions from the, from the previous one, is, is, Yankton Baseball Association always wants to be the lead on this, so we don't ever want to burden not only you guys, but we also don't want to burden other organizations because they have needs too. So, that is, that is always our thought process, our philosophy going into it. Again, this isn't really the norm that we've, we've asked for, but we felt like maybe if, if this was available to us, then we would be able to, like I said in the, in the letter, that be able to maybe move forward in, in some projects that, that we're looking at with some other organizations and, and departments to further out, further help the community out in the long run. So, with that being said, I did get, we did get the proposal, and we thought, you know, if you guys were able to pay that now, the half of whatever Amy suggested, we felt was very generous. And, and whatever you guys decide today, Yankton Baseball is going to move forward. This actually project is pretty much done right now. So, we are going to start a little campaign of fundraising, you know, and, and going forward. We're just really looking for some type of assistance and continue our relationship with you guys as much as we can. So, like you said, we don't necessarily always want to be that person that, or that organization that wants to, you know, just come here and ask for money. This was, again, out of the norm for us, but we feel like this could kind of, I, I don't like to use the momentum all the time for, it's kind of been overused in my, in my world. So, but I, we do kind of want to keep going. I think there's some other things on the horizon that I think, that we would like to proceed with here in the next five years. So, Tom, do you have anything to add? Tom's kind of our historian, so.
Yeah, my son was 15 when I started with this organization. He's now 42, and my McGlaughlin midget math makes it about 27 years. Historically, I just wanted to point out a few things. The first thing that we were involved with was, was putting together the grandstand. That was a group of Mount Marty, $100,000, the city, $100,000, Yankton Baseball, $361,567. That just shows you historically where some of these projects have been. The light project was $188,345. The turf project was $236,843. Well over $800,000 worth of projects that we have done to Riverside Field. So, I just wanted to, to give you that perspective. Also, you know, Amy had mentioned that her recommendation is if you did fund anything, it would be at 50%. And as he's already said, Jason's already said that that's a very generous offer, and we was, we would love to see that. That would save us $5,220 in interest over the next year, because we're borrowing the money to make this project happen. So, just wanted to say that. You know, being on a, YBA that long, my wife keeps saying, how long are you going to do this? How long are you going to do this? I says, well, when we get out of debt, I might think about it. But we're never out of debt, because Jason and Andy always have another project that they want to do. So, but it's, usually those projects are Mount Marty, Yankton Baseball, and, and whatever the city can do with in-kind or, or supplies. But this is a unique situation, it's already, if you've been down at Riverside Field, you see there's been, all this stuff has already been done. It's just amazing, that fencing project is, is just unbelievable. And the dugouts are going to be extended, and, and a fence in front for safety purposes. So, I would just hope that you would approve the 50% of the asking here tonight.
That's a, a good call out there, Jason, and I'm just curious, the discussion of the YBA, on understanding that typically these are partnerships between the city, YBA, and even the momentous, Mount Marty University. So, usually, we typically look at somehow splitting that up in thirds, and so I'm curious behind... So usually we typically look at somehow splitting that up in thirds and so I'm curious behind the discussion of YBA on saying, "Ask the city for 100%" and where is Mount Marty in this and have they been asked because of that typical balance that we have of the usage of that facility?
Yeah, um Mount Marty is kind of a different, uh kind of a different beast on, on what they can give us and so sometimes uh there's some different areas. Uh like in years past, they were actually the co-signer for, for the loan, uh because obviously if we can't come up with the money, you know, who is? So, uh so there's some different ways that we approach Mount Marty. With the turf project, um we did have an alumni uh moving forward with that. We asked the alumni to help out with a lot of that, obviously with Bob Tereshinsky, that aspect of it. Um and, and they do provide a grant writer for us, so that she does. We've never been able to get grant, grants until we asked her to start writing for us and now with the light project, we ended up getting, I think, 50,000 from the major league um association and they, we got, I think, 20% off our lights at the same time. So uh and then we've had some other um grants too. We have applied for some grants, um that we just received one that's going to allow us to get to another one. So we do have other avenues that we're approaching with this. Um but yes, Mount Marty is going to be a player uh in this. We just don't know exactly how much it's going to be. Um so um I think that's, it's always kind of been that way with us and obviously with, with uh where we're at and with our professions and, and stuff like that, then that, I think that's always going to be there for us. And um so again, we are, you know, are gonna do whatever we can. I mean, if you came back and said, "No, we're not going to do this," we're going to go out and find ways to, to do this, but we would really appreciate, you know, as much assistance as possible, so.
So you talk about this, if we approve 100%, this is going to free up funds for you to do other projects on the horizon. What are those other projects that spending, that helping you with a full ask is going to provide?
Um we're in preliminary talks of, of a new field, another field that would be a multi-use field. Uh we haven't really sat down and got logistics of it, but we've had some conversation with some organizations about um with softball being sanctioned and, and stuff and, you know, previously we've had a pipe dream of having the, the Riverside Field to turn into another, the softball field turn into another baseball field, but that would be a huge project, right? So we, we've, we've, there's some fields around town that we were looking at maybe trying to enlarge and, and some other things like that. But again, those are very preliminary talks. We haven't got numbers, we haven't even really sat down and said anything, but that would be something that we would try to do more of a multi-use field. So then that would allow not only softball, but baseball be involved in it and, and that would give both organizations another couple of nice fields to, to work with, so.
Two things to point out. One, I'm glad you touched on the grants. Again, when you think about funding, they can get a loan at the bank, they can fundraise probably from most people that live in town. Alumni might be out of town where you're bringing in a little bit out of town money, but the grants is purely out of town money. So that's a big deal. Nothing against uh the Friends of Saratoga, it's a new group and maybe someday they would get to that level. Uh and again, going back in time, youth baseball, I believe at Saratoga, uh right before I came to town, worked with the twin, the, the league teams had their own grant, so either Kansas City Royals or Minnesota Twins funding. So there's been some money brought into town through the years, whether it's at Saratoga or at, at the stadium there. And the other thing is that you could speak to maybe a little bit more, I would assume everybody knows it, but you never know. When we have those, when you, I'm not going to say we, when you host those big tournaments, you're playing games outside of Yankton because we don't have the second field.
Yeah, so in the last, I would say, last couple of years, well, actually, our Legion Tournament that is hosted, has actually two other locations. Um you know, obviously we'd like to keep as much as we can in, in town there, but that's like, that has like 27 teams that are associated with it, so there's a lot of teams. Um but in the last couple of years, we've added a few tournaments where we've had to have either Vermilion host it or uh Crofton, you know, host it and then obviously we pay them some money and we work out a deal. But having another full-size baseball field would really allow us to not only do that, but maybe host others, some more state tournaments and, and some things like that, that uh, that, that would be nice. Speaking from experience, I spent four days in Watertown this last, this last year, so I got, got pretty tired of living in, in the hotel in Watertown for four, four straight days. But uh so a lot of these tournaments aren't just one or two days, some of them are, but um, but we do get some, um, we do get quite a few teams that come not only from South Dakota, but we do get some from Nebraska that come up and, and some out of Minnesota every once in a while, so. Uh but yeah, we, that's ultimately our next goal would be to, to, to try to do that so then we can have those monies, that money staying here in town and, and using our businesses, so.
So just to clarify, so Mount Marty University has, has agreed and, and is pledging something? We just don't know what at this time?
Yeah, yeah, we haven't, uh, you know, it's kind of one of those works in progress, but yeah, they, we will, they will support uh this project as best as they can and maybe not necessarily always uh dollar figure that we know right away, but over, even if it's over a few years that they would, they would be able to do something for this. And a lot of it too is they will supply us some workers. They have about 50, 60 baseball players that can help us on some labor sometimes. So uh they do a lot of that stuff toward the end of the year for us, taking down nets and, and doing some of their little projects like that. So there's kind of some different ways we work it there, so.
So as someone who's spent summers playing outfield on that field and getting torn up by rocks on the warning track, I can tell you that, I at least feel that's a pretty strong investment to make, at least for the safety of the players. But um you'd mentioned in your, in your letter, Jason, that um there's some insurance liability that we may be able to alleviate it with some of the safety fencing project that is along the dugouts, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so.
So again, we, we own it, so safety benefits when they come through and tour all of our facilities, park shop, buildings, swimming pool, you name it, give us recommendations on safety, uh things that we could do to lower our liability risks. And so they were here this fall, uh we were at Riverside Baseball Stadium, they were here in 2017, 2018, it came up. We had bought, we had worked with Mount Marty and the Baseball Association, we had bought some portable nets to set at an angle in front of them, but this is the second time safety benefits is brought up, that those dugouts are not safe without a fence in front of them. The portable, when we went through this fall, the portable fences weren't sitting there in front of them, so uh.
Yeah.
It needs to be addressed and probably more than just.
When we, when we did the turf, the, the original turf project, we um, we didn't, the portable ones really didn't have anything to anchor it onto because we have gravel underneath it. So um, but that's what we're changing now. Uh we're going to go ahead and have uh fence posts put in, um then we're going to have one on the, one side of it's going to be a little higher and, and the dugouts are still far enough away, but this will at least uh be able for someone to duck below it if it, you know, it comes in and, you know, if you're sitting in the dugout, you should be fine. So uh but that will add, add to that safety feature, um so.
Quick question, Todd. So yes, city owns um the property here. The, what is it? It's a shared use agreement that we have with the folks at YBA. Is Mount Marty a party to that?
Yeah, so uh going back, as Dr. Stotz had mentioned, uh when the grandstand, press box, backstop project took place, uh an agreement was drawn up between the three entities, Yankton Baseball Association, Mount Marty College and the city, uh for a use agreement. That was uh revised when we did the turf project because of the donation and the naming rights with uh Bob Tereshinsky Field. So yes, we do have a written agreement that was updated with the turf field, spells out usage for Mount Marty College, Yankton Baseball Association and the city of Yankton. Reality is, other than in the past Riverboat Days making an ask, we, the city, really don't use it for any projects. KYNT invites the Royals in and everybody's on board with that, that free city event. Otherwise, unless they have a little more history, I'm not sure the city of Yankton has ever done an event there.
Not uh, no, not, I mean, you can, I mean, obviously. We, we had hosted a wedding there, someone rented a, rented it out and hosted a wedding there, but yeah, no, not, not since uh we put the turf in, um there's really no, Riverboat Days uses it now a little bit more over the last couple of years, but um, but it's been pretty.
Minimal.
Minimal, yep.
So does that shared use um agreement, does it spell out how costs like these are supposed to be divvied up or does it allow some latitude in a situation like, in a situation like this where, you know, we might go over a third or we might be half or we'd all?
No, I don't think that the use agreement spells out more uh priority use, that we're going to meet and set up calendars, who's going to maintain, uh like we're taking out the garbage, uh scoreboard, again, is 100% baseball when they put in the scoreboard, uh those type of things not, doesn't spell out, this should be the process we use if there's going to be a bigger capital improvement project coming forward.
And, and kind of use it, the way we usually do it, obviously, is, is, without any of these projects, we have to obviously run through Todd first and then, and then uh if Amy needs to be involved or any other city commit, or city uh worker needs to be involved, that's kind of the way we do it. We need to ask, we need to get blessings from them before we can just say, "Oh, let's go do this." So that's kind of the process we started uh earlier, uh I would say this, later this summer and then, and then kind of move forward, so.
And again, as was mentioned, normally we do a little bit of what, we can have people, equipment, sometimes crushed concrete, just depends on, on what, what the project is. But again, with just what we were up against work-wise ourselves, it just didn't work out this fall with the timeline that they were looking at.
Yep.
And then there was some private contractors that could and so they were able to work with them and, and that was great.
Um I have a, a question and trust me, this question is not coming from a farm supporting baseball, because as you know, I live down at Riverside Park as much as I lived at Saratoga, so uh those years greatly spent there. But I am curious, unlike softball, who ran into kind of a fluke that they had a plan in place, they were going to fund it and put the shade structure in place and then found out that plan didn't work. Uh you had mentioned earlier that this work is almost done, that the work that you're bringing in front of the city commission uh is almost done and now requesting the funds. Can I ask why then, going back, you did not come to the city and request it the normal way of going through the budget process since you obviously were well in advance with the plans in place? So I'm not saying it.
No, I get what you're saying, yeah.
I'm just curious why, like, it's being recommended that you request the funds.
Well, we were under a little bit of a time crunch because we knew that the projects were going to be onto the field and, you know, with Mount Marty's season could be starting at the end of February and March, uh we knew there wouldn't be as much. I mean, we had to get the turf in there before that, you know, and, and obviously if we did some things, we wouldn't have chances to plant some grass or do some, do some maintenance work, obviously. So we approved, the board, our, our board approved, uh moving forward with this project. Um and then um once we kind of made that uh approval, then obviously we were in talks with these guys and then uh, then we came back and asked what, you know, what we'd want to do financially and that's where we came back with this. And I think at our last, I think at our November meeting is when we maybe approved the, the asking price on this, so.
Thank you.
So that kind of gives you.
Yeah, no, I was just curious on the, on the timeline on that. Cause when we were talking about that, I was like, wait.
Usually it's probably not necessarily that we go this late, but like, or not come to you guys beforehand, but um we kind of already had a plan in place a little bit, so uh we knew we had to get something moving uh with the turf company and excavating before we moved forward with that, so.
Uh just out of curiosity, I'm ignorant to know if the, does the park and rec board have a role to play in this as well?
Normally they come and let the park advisory board know that there's going to be projects brought forward. Uh the park advisory board talks about it and this time there wasn't much for funding because they didn't know funding, so we didn't have amounts of money, so.
Based on your past fundraising efforts, you know, if we were to fund this at 50%, 87,000, do you, Dr. Stotz said it could save you, you know, 5,000 plus dollars. Do you feel that you could come up with that balance in fundraising within the calendar year, the next calendar year, so you don't have to?
That's always the goal.
Right. Based on past fundraising efforts.
No, yeah, you know, I think in, if you go back to each project and Tom could always correct me, it's usually been about three years that we've been able to pay it off. Uh our light project ended up going a little longer than, than that, but uh that's kind of our goal, is to get it done, you know, within that and hopefully, I think we've even been less than that in a couple of the projects, so.
But even if we funded this at 50%, um it would help expedite your future project timeline versus having to come up with 150 or so thousand?
Yeah, 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 definitely would.
Other questions from the commission? I know we do not have a motion on the floor yet, but I want to make sure everybody feels that they're making an informed decision once that's been asked.
I just want to compliment the Yankton Baseball Association. Nonprofit entity, 990 tax documents are out there, very well-run organization. I know Tom probably plays a big role in that, runs a tight ship. I just got to compliment you guys because that, not every organization, especially when you're talking about bringing a lot of volunteers, can have the level of consistency that I've seen in your tax reporting documents and so that's impressive and I just wanted to compliment you on that. You're the kind of organization that I appreciate having the opportunity to invest taxpayer dollars in.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I guess one other question I have for you about, um how do you state, like State Legion Tournament, how does that get, how does Yankton get that selection? Is it on a rotating basis or is it a competitive process every year?
Yeah, I mean, obviously Rapid gets a, gets a leg up most of the time. Um so we applied for it a couple, so it's an approval, you have to kind of apply for it like two years in advance. Uh we applied for it a couple of years ago, but Mitchell was kind of in the same boat we were, where they didn't have it for a long time, so they kind of superseded us. And then Rapid just last year put in a whole new uh complex and turfed the whole field and they obviously jumped, jumped us and then we were able to get this one. So uh just to kind of give you an idea is uh when the last time we did it, um we, we were like the, over the years, we, we brought in the second best gate besides Rapid City. Um so people travel down here, uh whether or not they necessarily always stay here, you know, Sioux Falls and those guys being close, but they do travel, they do spend money here, uh and it's, it's a huge, uh huge fundraiser for us. It's a big deal that we've, we've gotten, we've gotten this event again, so.
And that's a eight-team tournament with what, 20-ish, 25 players per team times two parents and, you know, sibling, I mean, it's a lot of people.
Yep, and it's over, I do believe they're trying to push it over from Wednesday to Saturday, I think it is now. Um so it's over four to five days.
And that one's only going to be in Yankton, not in other satellite sites?
It's only in Yankton, it's in one site, yep, so.
And that's wonderful. How, how many people approximately do you think that that's ballpark we'll bring to town then, that tournament and?
Ballpark.
No one intended.
Uh I, I don't even know, tell you to be honest, I mean, um you'll probably, I mean, should try taking attendance, I guess, so um, I mean, we're, yeah.
But how far Yankton goes in the tournament?
Yeah. And it does, it does kind of depend too on, on who's, who's still in it, you know, so if there's a lot of Sioux Falls schools, there are teams that are still in it, they travel fairly well. Um you know, if it's, if it's pure, that's maybe here, you're probably not going to get as many kid people, but you'll get a bunch of, I mean, I, I would say even our, our local tournaments that we hold, uh if it really depends on Sioux Falls and those guys are around for, for majority of it, we'll have, we'll have good crowds. So um, you know, I wish I could put a number on it, but maybe that's what we'll do this year, so have a little tally at the, at the gate, so.
Can we do some discounted park passes for, for water park pass?
Maybe have a team event.
Other commission discussion questions? If there are none, then I would ask, what's your pleasure?
I would like to propose a motion to fund the project at 50% of the ask, which would be 87,000 dollars.
Commissioner Shaw, are you suggesting that come out of the triple B?
Yes, I am, thank you.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to um support this at 87,000, which is 50% of the ask coming out of the triple B. Is there other commission discussion?
Maybe for Todd, that second field, um is that also under the same shared use agreement that we have between? that we have between Mount Marty and YBA?
Well, there is no second field at the moment, so.
No, I'm sorry, so that, the second field that was mentioned, so we're having, we're, we're doing the improvements to that softball field.
Oh, down end.
Next to Riverside, yes.
So we've budgeted 150, and we were asking for 50 from youth softball, and 50 from Mount Marty, 10 years, $5,000 each year, so a third and a third and a third. Hopefully, it comes in less than 150, but.
I worry about going forward with this, with it being unbudgeted, and the fact that it is already, for the most part, done, so that there isn't the urgency of, well, it's, we're not gonna get it this season, it is going to be here this season. I, I guess I would like to maybe see it put into the budget for this coming year, and, and possibly, if we can fund more than half of it, great, but I'm, I'm hesitant to fund it, do two, do two things here, back-to-back, that are, that are gonna be over $100,000 that, that was not, was not budgeted. I think if we can push it into next year, know a little bit more, I understand that there is the, there is the, the, the interest that, that does have to be paid on, and I, as a small business owner, understand it all too well, but I, I think we've, we have a, a budget, and I would love to see this be in the budget, because I'm all for the baseball association, I'm just, I'm hesitant with doing too many unbudgeted entities, especially one, one meeting. And so I would be, like I said, I'd be hesitant to do it, but would like to see it in this next year's, and, and if, and if it's, if we can make it work, I think it's absolutely a viable thing to do.
Other commission discussion thoughts? Would anybody else in the public like to address the commission on this? In front of you is a motion to support this memorandum at $87,000 out of the Triple B. Al, roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to item number nine, which is consideration of memorandum 22-233 regarding a change order for Fifth Street to Green Street to Spruce Street. There's a lot of streets construction project. This is $72,404.35, which is over the $566,650.25. Does include nine days of liquided, liquided, liquidated, liquidated streets, I'm, I'm struggling here, damages, and this would be two masonry components, again, in the amount of $72,404.35, which is overage. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number 10 is consideration of memorandum 22-235 regarding the change order, final project acceptance, and final payment for the active transportation sidewalk installations. This was for three locations, this is coming in at $61,788.25, which is $3,817.70 above what was budgeted or expected due to adding curb. Again, this would be two masonry components. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number 11, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-236 and resolution 22-61 regarding four surplus items. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number 12 is consideration of memorandum 22-220 regarding a bid award for the Mead property development. As was stated in your packet, six bids were received, this is for Slowie Construction. Please note, the amended total, as shared by City Manager Leon in her update, is, it looks like, if I wrote it down in my thing, it'd be $3,482,296.90, which includes then that increase of $36.40, which is an adjustment in the packet that was sent before you, which still puts Slowie Construction as the low bidder. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept Slowie Construction in the amount of $3,482,296.90. Is there any commission discussion?
I notice in the memorandum, we have an E on the end of Mead, is that, but in other places, there's no E? There's not supposed, so can we correct that for historical purposes, just in case a historian comes along and they want to make sure they're getting the right spelling? Thanks.
I believe as a historical precedence, it's, it has gone back and forth and back and forth.
It's Meade, Meade, okay. All right, with that correction then, any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. As stated earlier in our meeting, we have moved another agenda item to new business. So number 13, under new business, is the naming of the SAC Task Force, which is in consideration of memorandum 22-237 regarding the mayor's appointments to the Summit Activity Center Task Force. This would include 10 citizens, one Yankton School District member, two commission members, and two city parks employees. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We do now have a motion and a second, is there commission discussion?
Yeah, so just a quick question, and I suppose a comment as well. When I first heard that this committee was gonna form, I, I may have called it a committee, it may have been called a committee, and I always have this, I don't know, negative attitude towards too many committees, but I like the fact that it's being called a task force. So if I understand it correctly, so a task force, it's more like it's, you know, it has a focused objective, it's maybe even time limited, so, so just out of curiosity, I, maybe it'd be useful to expand on what is the task, task force's specific objective that they are going to accomplish, and I suppose what's the hope for when they'll have it accomplished?
Do you want me to start, you want to start? No, I mean, I, I think I'll give my perspective, and, and obviously, City Manager Leon can, and I would even ask Todd if he has thoughts as we're doing this, since the three of us worked together to put this committee together, task force, sorry. But you know, it's, it's one of those things that, when the Concerned Citizen Group that came forward to the commission, came in front of us, talking about it, it was an idea that if there was a way to get citizen input, and ideas on how we can better use that facility and services that we could provide, that makes it more relevant, and, and opportunities to provide to our community that maybe we're missing in other places, that is a unique facility. So the task force, in my mind, when I thought about bringing that forward, was just that, and that is to task this group with how do we make the Summit Activity Center relevant? How do we increase usage, space usage, people usage, services, classes, and opportunities that we're able to offer there? And really, I'm looking forward to the input of that task force to see how we can move forward in getting that all accomplished. And I agree, Commissioner Mybaum, I see this as not a long-term task force by any means, but one that maybe is relevant for maybe six months to kind of get on board, and then I really do see this being turned back over to the Parks and Rec Department to then take what's recommended and move forward with getting it implemented. But that's my take on it, but I would ask City Manager Leon her thoughts too.
I would echo those remarks, Mayor. I would just add also that part of the goal is to be able to talk about these ideas and discuss the, the costs of those. So talking about the, you know, return on investment on, on things, so I, I would anticipate we're gonna have some programming ideas, we're gonna have some membership drive ideas or ways to have new members, we're gonna have some facility improvement ideas, but also, we need to talk about what's relevant in terms of, or what's, what's attainable in terms of costs, and then we also want to talk about long-term life of, of these things. So as of now, we're planning that six-month timeframe, we're talking about two meetings per month, so we can set some clear goals, and we think that it's only fair, if committees are set up, they tend to kind of say forever and sometimes lose purpose, but I think if there's topics provided to the folks before each meeting, they can, you know, work on them and then come back with ideas, we're making good use of the time of the folks on the task force as well.
I think the other goal in putting it together and, and working with Todd and, and Amy, if you look at that list, is the variety, I might say, of the folks who have stepped forward and are gonna serve on that, from young, single individuals, to family, folks with children and, and family members, to retired members, one of the asks I made, and appreciate ABS for stepping forward, I had to ask them to step forward and nominate somebody from their staff, because they were here those nights advocating, and I think that's a population in our community that we want to make sure we're servicing their needs as well. So that also includes an ABS staff member. So it's, I, I, to me, I'm, I'm very excited, because I do think it's a, a good cross-reference of, of all types of ages and abilities in our community that have agreed to serve on that.
I, I think it's a great thing. I think it's something that, that the community, when they were here, asked for, and I think it's a, I think it's a good thing to, to go through, and, and like you had said about the diversification of the folks that are on it, you know, I think it's, hmm, we, we all have a tendency to kind of think the way that we think, and we think other people think the way we think, but that is, we all know that that isn't the case. Everybody has their own individual needs and wants, and it's good to be able to hear that from a diversified group of folks.
Other commission comments, questions, thoughts? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. So again, would like to thank Commissioner Scham, who I teased, drew the short straw, the long straw, I'm not sure how it happened, and the rest of the city commissioners who did volunteer their name to be on this committee, we didn't want to overwhelm it with too many city commissioners, so we went with two of us, and also to the citizens who have stepped forward, who have been at the meetings and are willing to help us continue to move services and opportunities forward as it relates to the SAC. So my thanks on that, and I look forward to getting together. Amy, I believe we're looking at starting that, since we're already coming up to the holidays in January.
Yes, we'll be sending out letters to everyone that put their name in the hat, and also letters with a meeting time and date for those who were named to the committee tomorrow, Mayor.
Thank you for that. All right, with that then, we are to other business, which we do not have any in front of the city commission tonight, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personnel matters under SDCL 1-25-2.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and anybody abstaining? All right, with that, we're adjourning into executive session. Thank you so much to everyone who came out tonight to hang with us.